For what?
For race manner.
Yeah, a lot of reading today.
Are you going to do this with Carol? That's for us. I don't know that I would be here if we don't have all the food and stuff. I'm making some mashed potatoes or something.
I said, we weren't here yesterday.
And I got everybody.
I'm the councilor.
Are we ready?
I thought that was like, listen, if you say so.
You ready? All right, guys. Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester City Council Meeting for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025. As always, we start with an invocation followed by the pledge. Today, the invocation will be brought to us by Minister Keith Mohammed from the Nation of Islam right here in Chester. All rise.
Good morning. Bowing our heads. Mister Milla Rahman Rahim, in the name of Almighty God, the beneficent, the most merciful, we give you thanks and praise for the precious gift of life. We thank you for the blessing of another day. We ask that you bless this city and those beyond with your unequal guidance, mercy, and protection in these turbulent and troubled times. We ask you, Lord, as we gather today, that you bless those of us who are in leadership, who serve as stewards over your sovereign authority, that you bless us with the spirit of humility, with the spirit of discernment, that you bless us with greater knowledge, wisdom, understanding, patience, and tolerance as we seek to serve your people. And lastly, we ask that all of us gathered here and beyond who desire to do good, that you help us, that you help us to overcome ego, that you help us to overcome personal agenda, and that you help us to come together in unity with the spirit of humility, that we may work together to make our city a safe and decent place to live. We pray this in the name of all your prophets and servants. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Present.
Green.
Present.
West.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present. Yes, sir. I get a motion to approve the minutes from October 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Public comment on agenda items only, and there are a lot of them today. If you have any comments on public, if you have any public comments on agenda items, just step right up to the mic. Seeing none, let's move on. Hey, council, in the future, we're not going to have two lines, old business, new business. There will be a slash, old and new business. Anybody have any?
Yes. Uh, this past, uh, Monday, we honored our veterans. And I wanted to give a round of applause to the parking rec, um, staff for making sure that the Mother's Ark Park was very presentable for our veterans. They worked very hard. They got the job done. They did a magnificent job. We were able to honor our community members with certificates showing them that we are grateful for the sacrifices that they all have given. So, uh, thank you, Councilman Davis, for your participation. Thank you, Councilman Green for showing up. And, uh, thank you again to Mr. Mark and all of your crew for doing what you do, and that was excellency. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I'd just like to make an announcement. Uh, one of the resolutions you guys will see on the agenda is the MOU, um, with, uh, Paraguay, um, the country of Paraguay. And there will be a signing on Saturday, uh, at 11:30 a.m. here in City Hall. Their ambassadors will be here, their president of their senate, and a number of their delegation will be here, um, as we sign the memorandum of understanding. So the community is invited to attend to that. It's open to the public. And, uh, later that night, they will be having, well, later that day, there will be a game, the, uh, Paraguay versus the USA team. So that's down at the soccer stadium. And then after the game, they'll be having a after-party networking, uh, celebration across the street at Dream Terminal. And, uh, the community is invited to that, and there will be tickets. I believe we're going to post it on the city's website, just in case anyone would like to go.
Is there a cost for the ticket?
Yep, the tickets are $50, but it's buy one, get one free. So two people for the price of one.
Thank you. Anyone else? I got a laundry list. We haven't had a council meeting in, uh, three weeks, so I'm gonna go through these real quick. Uh, right downstairs last Wednesday, the House, and this is, uh, of Pennsylvania, the House Environmental Resources and Natural Protection Committee had a hearing on LNG export terminal proposed for southeast Pennsylvania, which basically means, uh, there's still talk out there that an LNG export terminal is targeted for anywhere between Marcus Hook and Eddie Stone. And we're right in the middle. So I spoke, we had, uh, Zulie Mayfield speak at the hearing, and basically, our message was pretty consistent. We do not want to see a LNG export terminal here. Along the same vein, in Philadelphia, uh, Council Lady Jamie Gautier has a bill in Philadelphia to stop Philadelphia from burning trash, which simply means that their trash won't come to Chester. On Monday, this coming Monday, at 1:00 p.m. in Philadelphia, I will be speaking at their hearing in front of the Philadelphia Environmental Committee, uh, pretty much saying the same thing, that we don't want your trash. This week on, this past week on, last week on Thursday, if you see it right out front, a statue was erected and a big celebration for Ms. Frida Gibbs, Frida the Cheetah, as we call her. That was a great celebration. And I have to stand corrected because I meant to shout out the Parks, the Parks Department for cleaning up that area. And it wasn't in my, uh, comments that were written, and I squoze it in, I said, I wanted to thank the Public Works Department for what they did in getting the pedestal up there. And then I saved room just for the Parks Department, and I said Public Works again. So I really apologize. The Public Works Department did a yeoman's job cleaning up that area. There's a lot of trees there, and, I mean, you can blow them away, and 10 minutes later, they're back. But it was a beautiful setting and a beautiful, uh, beautiful ceremony. The Chester Park Band Shell, you know, that place that has the stage with the band shell and the seats out in front? Today at 6 o'clock, County Council will be voting on whether they're going to, uh, back up the authority that has granted us $100,000 to fix it up. I think they're going to do it, but if anybody wants to go to County Council and support it, I was out there at their deliberative on Monday. It's, seems pretty, pretty sure we're going to get that $100,000. Once we get the approval at County Council this afternoon or this evening, planning will begin. And the, the process will probably take us to March-ish, early spring, to start the renovations. And hopefully, by the end of summer, we can have some events out in Chester Park again at the Band Shell. For those of you who are following the work that we were doing to get some repairs done at the Banniger, some life safety repairs, that work has been, uh, ordered by the courts to get done. The agreements have been signed, and, uh, we're really happy that we were able to get that work done from the building owners there. There's still a lot to be done over there, but some of the building issues that, like elevators being out, sprinkler systems not working, uh, the work is ongoing right now, if not already complete. Right outside here, not outside here, but the entrance on the post office side of the building, a bike maintenance station was put up and, I guess we'll call it a ribbon cutting on Friday. Might not seem like much, but if you ride a bicycle when you need air in your tire and you don't have $1.50, you can always just ride here, or bring your bike here, or in Air Park, there's also one of these stations. The station also has a bunch of tools in there, so if you need to tighten up something. Why that's really important is that they've been strategically located, so when the trail system gets completed around Chester, you'll be able to ride your bikes all throughout the city of Chester without having to touch a street, or you'll be on a part of a trail that, that's in the streets. And these bike stations, uh, just on the QR code are identified all over the nation where they are. So for people who are biking, that's really a big deal. He mentioned Paraguay Anti-Poverty Symposium I went to at Villanova University, and it told me one thing, that poverty for some people isn't the same poverty that we're talking about here. So I really believe we need to, uh, have something like that, an anti-poverty symposium right here in the city of Chester, because the audiences, uh, would be vastly different. And I also went to one at the University of Pennsylvania called AI for Public Good that was sponsored by Governor Shapiro. Some good stuff came out of there. Uh, we'll be, we'll be looking to have a mayor's lecture really soon for some work that, uh, a black professor and, and a PhD student that works with him is doing in a space that would help reduce crime. Looking forward to that. We had trunk retreats since we left. Thank you, everybody who participated in that here at City Hall, who put that together in our parking lot and for the police station. For those of you who know Meg Grant, uh, if you don't know Meg Grant, she's been a force. What's the name? Help me, help me, Kristen. Keystone First, yes. So down on Ninth and Flower, right at, at Bridge Entrance where the Wellness Center is, I suggest to be renamed the Meg Grant Wellness Center. That's how impactful she was in bringing that to us. Chester High School Football keeps winning. Yay for them. Oh, did they kick Strathavens' butt. It was so good to see. Uh, and then they play about Baird-Rustin on Saturday at 1:00. That's the team that knocked them out the playoffs last year, so that's going to be a, a real important game for them. I think that's the semifinals for the districts. And on the 20th of this month, at 6:00 p.m. at the Access Center, I am hosting an event called the State of Black Pennsylvania. So be looking for some information there, but we expect that there will be a lot of elected officials from across the state just meeting and convening to talk about shared goals and objectives that we have in our positions across the state. And to be united, create a united block to, uh, talk to issues on the state on behalf of us as elect, black elected officials. Now it is time for our clerk to go through the ordinances and resolutions, which we have a lot of, so...
So, Mr. Mayor, I just asked our solicitor, due to the fact that we have so many resolutions today, would it be okay with you all that I just read the verbiage of each one of these?
It is permissible under the sunshine law, but it's council's preference as to whether they want the summary or the entirety of the resolution.
I'm going to suggest just the summaries, because we do put online the entire resolutions and ordinances, so if anybody wants to read them in full, uh, it's available to you right now.
Correct, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, when I do the minutes, they are also completely typed out.
Okay.
So it's okay? Everybody's okay?
I agree.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Ordinance number five, first reading of Bill Number Five, Amending Part 13, Planning and Zoning, to revise subsection 1327.01B entitled Commercial Uses of Article 1327 entitled Allow Uses in Primarily Non-Residential Zoning Districts to Prohibit a Construction Company or Trade Person's Headquarters in the C-1/R, C-2/R, CBD, and W-1 zoning districts to establish a maximum percentage of lot for outdoor storage in the light industrial commercial known as LIK zoning district and define construction company or trade person's headquarters in subsection 1365.02.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me correct you. I move that we pass Bill Number Five on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number Five on its first reading.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
First reading of Bill Number Six, Providing for the Opening of Yurick Street, a Vacated Street situated generally between the southerly side of West Second Street and the northerly side of West Front Street.
I move that we pass Bill Number Six on its first reading.
I second that we pass Bill Number Six on its first reading.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolutions, authorize approval for the installation of handicap, a parking zone in the 200 block of Brew Mall Street, in the 800 block of West Eighth Street, in the 100 block of East 21st Street, in the 1100 block of Butler Street, in the 300 block of East 20th Street, and in the 100 block of Thurlow Street in the city of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Authorize approval for the appointment of an interim open records officer, which will be Candace Newsom.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Next one is authorize the approval for testing to be given by the Civil Service Board to all eligible candidates for the position of Italian Chief in the Chester Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
I'm going to go back and I'm just add the resolution number so we can follow along. Now we're at R-125, authorize approval to enter into a license agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the installation, access, maintenance, operation, and remove air monitoring stations at the Boys and Girls Club.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'll just make a comment that, uh, all around town, there are these different type of air monitors or different locations for air pollution monitors, and it's just an effort to monitor what parts of the neighborhoods are seeing higher incidences of the different pollutions. Mostly, these monitors measure particulate matter, and that's basically from exhaust. So you can imagine, you'll see a lot of it near the highways and a lot of it near 291 during the day. Uh, I think they all plug into the same website where you can see, uh, by number and on a map of the city where they all rate or register like 24 hours a day. So we'll make sure we get that information out to the public as well. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
R-126. Authorize approval for the preparation of a request for proposals for professional engineering consulting services.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 127, authorize approval of the ratification of the submission of a statewide local share assessment grant to be used for the upgrade of damaged and inoperable vehicles in various departments.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 128, authorize approval of the ratification for the engagement of MG Engineering Associates LLC to provide environmental consulting and field oversight services.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 129, authorize approval of change order number two, known as Core-0002, in the amount of $9,886, increasing the contract value between the city of Chester and Davis Construction to $4,918,253.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just make the comment that this refers to the Public Works Garage that's being built on 291 and Lloyd. Lloyd, 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 yeah. And as we go through the work, as we dig holes in the ground, there's going to be stuff that comes up. So that's what these change orders, that you'll probably see a few more between now and the time that it's complete at the end of next year. So when you see Davis Construction, that basically refers to new work that is outside the scope of the original, uh, contract. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 130, authorize approval of security release number two for the Fourth and Booth Distribution Center Land Development Phase Two in the amount of $254,083.08, leaving a balance of $23,740 to be retained as maintenance security through April 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 131, authorize approval of the amendment of the fiscal year 2021 action plan for the home-ARP funding and improve the allocation of home-ARP funds not to exceed $660,839 to Everett Pace Center Incorporated for Phase One of the Silver Care Senior Housing Development Project.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'll make the comment that for those of you who are familiar with the old Sacred Heart Hospital, the old Sacred Heart Hospital itself is being converted into, uh, housing for people who have primarily medical needs. It's not particularly senior housing. The objective of Everest Silver Care is to develop a whole senior, what they say here, senior housing development project where if you have assisted, need assistance, you'll have a campus right there where you'll have, you know, your medical supplies and adult daycare and cafeteria and all that. So what this will do, will help start Phase One, I, which will be, I don't know the number of units, somebody could tell me, but they're going to convert what used to be old hotel hospital rooms into apartments. So they're going to start from the bottom up. I think it's the first two floors is in the first phase, and then the next two floors after that. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 132, authorize approval of the submission of a PICO Green Region Open Space Program Grant for the Crozier Park Trail reforestation project.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? For those of you who are of a certain age, you remember the swimming pool in Crozier Park? The swimming pool in Crozier Park, if you were to go down there now, you'll see it's all clear of trees. It's going to be part of a trail system. And this reforestation is to put the trees back down there. So if you go down Crozier or down Curlin Street and look to the left or right, you'll see new sidewalks and curves being put in now. That work actually all, goes all the way down the hill to where the swimming pool used to be, and will come back up the hill and connect to a trail system. Which will connect to the trail that's in Air Park. So you'll go behind Chester High School and through, I forget the name of that neighborhood, but over Curlin Street and into the park. So when it's all said and done, everything will be connected. But that's what this piece is about. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 133, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Chester, the Delaware County District Attorney's Office, and the Pennsylvania Horticulture Society for the stabilization and maintenance of vacant lots owned by the city of Chester and the Chester Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? This one's exciting. This one is, is free money. We love grants. That will come in to take vacant lots. And by vacant lots, they're basically blocks where housing has been, uh, you know, knocked down and in its place to put little parks or best pocket parks, as we used to call them back in the day. There's going to be probably as many as 50. Is that right? About 50 of these parks that will be, uh, put in around the city with this funding. That's exciting. My goal is that everybody is within a five-minute walk to some green space, and we would expect that when they show up in your neighborhood, that the neighbors, maybe through our Block Captain campaign, will help us, our Public Works Department, and those responsible for maintaining these small parks. But this is super exciting. It ta, takes a lot of vacant lots off the city. We get calls all summer long about overgrown weeds and lots that are empty, you know, many times, I think up to 70% of the work that our Public Works Department does is for properties that don't even belong to the city. So to be cutting a park as opposed to be cr, cutting a overgrown lot is going to be a lot more palatable to all of us. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Whamms.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 134, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Chester, the Delaware County District Attorney's Office, and the Chester Police Department for the Chester Partners for Safe Neighborhoods Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Chester Partners for Safe Neighborhoods, also known as CPSN, has been an, an initiative of... of District Attorney Jack Stolzheimer ever since he's taken office. They've put a lot of attention on Chester. It's a program where the county and the Chester Police Department engage with individuals in our community who have had trouble, have done time, and are back in the community ready to make sure that young people don't go through the same things that they went through. Sometimes the people out in these, in our community just need a little bit of help. They may need to buy some diapers or get a driver's license or apply for a job, and that's what the liaison does. The work that they've done is instrumental in reducing the amount of violent crime that we've had in the city over the past five years. The rates have gone down. So we're really excited to see CPSN or Chester Partners for Safe Neighborhood continue. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 135, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Chester and the City of Salto del Guayra, Paraguay, to establish a sister city relationship.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution 136, authorize approval for the ratification of an agreement with David Blackmore and Associates, known as DBA Incorporated, for the required professional services to support the construction of the city's public works building at a cost not to exceed $29,273.84.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Again, we're talking about the public works building. You'll continue to see, as needed, other resolutions which will approve funding to get that done. Oh, Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
I'd just like to let the community know that we did have an executive session on Monday, November 10th, mayor and council. I don't want you to think that we're just flipping through these very quickly. We have studied each one of these resolutions and ordinances thoroughly. So we want, we don't want you to think that we're just voting, you know, but we did look at each one of them and we're fully aware and understand what's going on with these ordinances and resolutions from today.
To her point. I mean, that's what our agenda meeting or deliberative meeting is about. We had an extra one in the form of an executive session, but I must say, this went a little too fast for me. So we'll, we'll play it by ear as we move forward, but with as many things on the agenda as we had, I'm glad we could kind of streamline this process. But again, all the resolutions and ordinances in full are available on our website. I see we have a lineup of guys who walked in in dayglow sweatshirts and t-shirts. I'm sure it's our Parks Department. Hi, guys. You missed all the compliments earlier. You're going to have to tune back to the video and see. But we have a special presentation today. Well, I can't call it special. We like all of our departments to report on the work that they do, and it's time for our Department of Parks, Recreation and Facilities to come forward. Director Mark Alexander has a short presentation to let the public know, let the citizens know what these, what his department has been doing over the past year. Thank you, Mark. And I think the PowerPoint will be showing on the screen.
Good morning, mayor, council, residents.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mark Alexander, Parks Director. For those of you who don't know, Parks, Rec and Facilities. I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight the recent accomplishments of the Parks, Rec and Facilities departments over the last quarters, as well as share a look ahead at what's to Our department manages 27 parks, five monuments, and four city-owned facilities, not including the fire stations. Just this past year, our team maintained over 2,500 acres of parkland and park space across the city. That entails grass cutting, weed whacking, tree trimming, tree removal, and debris removal, and also occasional dump site. Believe it or not, we do get dump sites in the parks as well. We also oversee event permits and coordinate many of the programs and community events that serve our residents. Department growth and efficiency. This year, we welcomed a new Parks and Rec Coordinator to our team. This role has already helped us improve event planning, community outreach permit management, allowing us to respond more quickly and keep programs running smoothly. We also purchased a piece of our new equipment, which is a tri-deck, which has greatly increased our efficiency in maintaining our parks, reducing manpower hours, and keeping our parks looking the best all season. Just to give you a few examples, Chester Park, which is our largest park here in the City of Chester, which is 72 acres, used to take us five days to complete with full staff. Now only takes us three and a half days. Memorial Park, 21 acres, was reduced from one, two, two days to one day. This piece of equipment was key to our department because it gives us the flexibility to do more in other areas that that's needed, also to the shortage of manpower in the Parks Department. We also made visible progress in several of our community spaces. At Four Seasons Park, we completed a lighting project at Seventh and Pennon through the Safe Neighboring Program, supported by PICO and the District Attorney's Office. This upgrade has improved both the safety and visibility for park visitors. For those of you who don't know where this park is located, it faces the back of the Dorrin Court housing, just to give you a, just to give you a, yes. At Sun Village Park, the storyboard wall project was successfully completed, and it's been very well received by the community. A special thank goes out to the Clean Air Council for their support on this effort. Summer pool, summer programs in Memorial Park Pool. The Memorial Park Pool was another project, another project major highlights this summer. Despite some early challenges, our team worked hard to open and operate the pool successfully, providing families and youth groups with a fun and safe place to enjoy all season long. We look forward to improving the services in 202026 and upgrading some pool maintenance. We also had an incredible year to our summer food program, serving about 250 children daily and distributing about 6,000 meals, which is double from last year's total of 3,000. This achievement would not have been possible without our partners. I want to elaborate on the food program real quick. We were totally caught off guard from a budget standpoint with 3,000 extra meals this year, according to last year. But after talking to the powers that be, we all collaborated and we thought the most important thing was that we fed 3,000 more children this year in the City of Chester. I would say that was money well spent. You agree?
Yes.
Yeah, so. And it was a reason for that. And I'm going to blame that solely on our summer food program vendor, Jamil Kotman, in Walnut Street Deli. The kids was raving how good his food was. I mean, we didn't take, I mean, we didn't take the rumors. We, I went, I went to parks myself. I went to all the locations myself, asking the kids, how was the food? And their eyes lit up like, like a Christmas tree, like, wow, this food is good. Some of the kids, they, they wanted meals seven days a week. And he was like, wow, can we get it on Saturday and Sunday as well? Even the mayor went out and talked to some of the kids, and he, he got the same, same So I want to thank Jamil Kotman for your great meals. I also want to thank Jonathan King, who was the coordinator for the food program, who took care of all the logistics, made sure everyone was where they were supposed to be and the meal count was correct. I also want to thank my office manager, Tanya, who's in the back for her part in making this happen. Thank you so much, Tanya. Looking ahead, as we look forward, we have seven, several exciting projects on the way. A new playground coming to Sun Village, bathrooms and facility upgrades at Sun Village, Sun Village Recreation Center. We also in talks about, we already are in talks about an amphitheater upgrades at Chester Park. A new trail is being built at Crozier with the collaboration of Seda and Partners. As the mayor alluded to, he kind of gave you a spin on what's going on up there at this current time. That should be completed sometime, sometime in December, going into the first of the new year. We also have a soccer and basketball courts upgrade at Seventh and Penn, known as Seventh, known as Seventh Street Courts in partnership with Love Football and the Philadelphia Union and Foundation and Kevin Durant. Completion of this project is also in January. Finally, finally, we look forward to maintaining the new public works building, which has been, which has broken ground with anticipation completion date time is in 2026. In closing, I want to thank our entire Parks, Rec, Recreation and Facilities team for their dedication, longevity, excellence. The commitment to keeping our parks safe, clean, active continues to enhance the quality of life for everyone in our city. Also, thank you to our coworkers and partners and residents for your ongoing support and for helping us make public spaces something to be proud of. I also want to take the time out to say some special thanks to my team. City Hall, we have some young folks in here that's doing some great things. I just so happen to have two of them in my department, and I want to give them some praise right now. I want to start with Mr. G. Quan Wesley, who is the Park, Parks and Rec Facilities Supervisor. He's also my supervisor, too. He reminds me every day of what I can and what I cannot do from a budget standpoint because he's my budget guy, too. I better make a whole lot of sense if I'm trying to spend money because he's not having it. Thank you. Keep up the good work, G. Quan. Your future is bright, whether you're here or in another location. Keep up the good work. Crystal Burrell, man, she, she's my brand-new rec coordinator. She's a firecracker. I mean, she, she goes 110 miles per hour all the time. Keep up the good work, Crystal. You brought a spark to our department. Love what you're doing. Keep up the good work. Tanya Johnson, she's my office manager. She's the battery of the department. She keeps everything running. She keeps us all running. She pays all the bills for the city, believe it or not. She does payroll. She, she makes all the bills, makes sure all the bills is paid. Tanya, thank you for your, for your work, for your hard work. Last but least, these young men in the back of me, I want to, I want to tell you a story about them real quick. Four of the guys in the Parks Department have over 100 years of experience here in the City of Chester. That's a lot of years.
Yes.
They deserve a hand, don't you think? The one guy right there in the middle, Mr. Chandler, has 38 years here in the city. I just want to thank those guys for all the hard work they do. I want to, I want to shout out their crew leader, Mr. Frisbee. I mean, he does, he does exactly what his, his title says. He lead, he leads by example, and I want to appreciate that. They, and I also want to, I can't forget my facilities guys, Pete, Damon.
Where you at?
And Mr. Morgan. And Kalika Luck, who greets everyone in the morning, and she greets, she greets everyone with a smile. Thank you, Kalika, for all your hard work as well. With that being said, any questions?
Any questions? We got some comments, I'm sure.
Yeah. I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I just want to thank the Parks Department because you guys are always there whenever I need something in terms of Parks and Recreation. I can definitely call you or G. Quan, and you guys are always just a phone call away. And to the staff here, anytime I need something in my office or something inside City Hall, I can call Frank, Pete, or Mr. Damon, and you guys are there. And to all the staff on the Parks Team, thank you guys for showing up every day and doing the hard work that I can't do. You guys answer that call. So I just want to thank you guys for the hard work that you put in the city and making the city look good. And oftentimes, people talk a lot of trash or say this or say that about how the parks look, about how the streets look, but I know for a fact that you guys show up to work every day and you work hard on behalf of the residents and on behalf of this city. So today, I just want to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Well, you know what I'm going to say. Most of you came from my department, Public Works, my old department, Public Works, and I'm so very proud of you, Mark, and all of your staff members for all of the hard work that you're doing each and every day. I'm very proud of you, and I'm asking the community, instead of criticizing, you know, you might, they may have gone to an area and cleaned up this day, and then somebody comes along and throws trash or whatever, and you're saying, oh, they don't do nothing. That's what I hear. They don't do nothing. But that's not true. I see them every day. I'm out and about every single day, all over the city, and I know what they do. We have some newcomers, too, who are new to the department, and they're working just as hard as everybody else, and I appreciate all of you and what you do for the City of
To the department, you guys do a phenomenal job. You weren't here this morning, when I, earlier this morning, when I spoke about you. You guys are hardworking, dedicated men that get the job done. I certainly appreciate all that you do. I appreciate all the efforts that recently was put into the Mother's Ark Park. I didn't know that that was the name of it. I just thought it was the park where everybody took their wedding pictures. But when we arrived on Monday, you were still working to beautify that park. You brought so much hope to the veterans that were being honored, and I just want to thank you for your hard work and continuous dedication here in the City of Chester.
So good morning. I'm going to follow the same sentiments as my colleagues. You guys do an amazing job. From G. Quan, who are a phone call away, you handle so much business when you're not even on the clock. I know that I can call you to handle business for our community, and you know, you never, you never waver. To Ms. Burrell, your new ideas and the new resources that we're bringing to the community for our kids is second to none, and I'm super joyous to have you here as part of City Hall. Ms. Alexander, you're doing a fine and amazing job with, you know, leading your department in a healthy and productive way. These gentlemen come to work every day, happy to be here, and will do anything for our community, and that goes with your leadership. So it speaks volumes to what you're doing and the camaraderie that you're building with the team. Mr. Pete and all the guys, you know, I'm going to go to war for you all because you go to war for our community. So I just want to let you know that you're supported, you're loved, and thank you for all you do.
When I joined council in 2022, Mayor Kirkland assigned me as Director of Parks and Public Property, I think it was called. Now we're calling it Department of Parks, Recreation and Facilities. Same thing, sort of. So Mark knows he can't fool me with anything. I've seen everything, every playground, every building, got some work started on the pool. I've seen everything, every playground, every building, got some work started on the pool, got some playgrounds going, but to see this work continuing in a ways that, that no one would ever imagine, because when a city's broke, that's the first thing you don't spend money on and that's, that's parks and playgrounds. Now that we kind of got some things in order now, you're seeing not only money being spent, but grants being won here in the city to get some big things done. One of the things that you didn't spend too much time on is facilities. And what facilities mean is sort of that public property piece. It's keeping this building together. This is, this building is starting to show its age. It still looks good, but it looks so much better than it did when I first got here. Floors are shiny, lights are brighter, furniture's been upgraded, windows are, I mean, just all those things, those little touches that make this a comfortable place to work in and appealing place for visitors to, to visit. Even the, you know, the multimedia stuff, all falls under facilities. We had an issue just yesterday, just yesterday. You know, I was in the building for a little while and the lights went out, but only upstairs. So who do I call? Mark. And who does he call? Whoever he has to, to get the lights on. So, I mean, we have lights today, but, you know, just absorb the numbers that he said. 27 parks and playgrounds. You heard one today, Four Seasons. They have names that you'd never even heard of. The monuments for, we have a couple of World War II monuments, Vietnam, I mean, those, those things are important and they have to be looked after too. There was one other, oh, the pool. The one thing you didn't mention, and you can't mention everything, I understand, I'm just trying to fill in the blanks for you, is not only is the pool operational, the water safe and clean, but people attend the pool and the numbers continue to increase because people have confidence in the pool. The locker rooms are cleaner, the, the whole facility just looks great. You guys are doing an amazing job. It's a much bigger job than anyone would ever imagine and you know what my only ask is, and I don't get mad because you do so much as a department, I want to get those cars that are down in the lobby, out on the street, soapbox derby cars. So, you know, they're not just trophies, they're just, they're not ornaments out front. We want the kids in those cars. So let's put that on the list for 2026 so we can grow that program again. But the work that you do with the few of the crew that you have, and I'm so happy to see that you have a staff inside that, that listens to you. You guys are very respectful to each other. The work that you do is, is just amazing and it's what we need in the city. Now, I hope you, you guys don't see it as a burden. I don't think you were here. When 50 new parks are about to come into the city, they're going to be small, but it's, it's going to require you guys to, to do even more work.
Well, I held some things back, Mayor. I didn't want to brag, I didn't want to brag too much.
Well, this is your time to shine, shameless plug time. You don't get that, that many opportunities to do so, but as you can hear from the community, from us, from your staff, I mean, we love the work that you do and let's, let's, whatever you need from me.
Yeah. I also want to thank Mayor and Council for all your support. Chief, Chief Moore for his support, CFO, Richard Troutman for all his support. I want to thank the receivers team for, for their assist with, with, matter of fact, I want to mention that we did manage to retrieve money back from the state for the food program. We actually doubled the money that we got back from last year, thanks to the receiver and his assist. Thank you. That's it.
Good job.
Thank you. Talks about the food program. When I was director, we didn't have a food program. People, no, I didn't have it that summer because we just couldn't get it together. Didn't have enough staff. The food supplier that year quit or went out of business and we just couldn't turn it around fast enough. But this year, like when you do this food program, you have to anticipate before it starts how many kids are going to be fed. And we anticipated and we contracted with, with Mr. Kotman to prepare X amount of meals based on our estimate and true to life, as Mark said, the meals were so good that kids were telling their friends and probably their moms and dads too. But in some cases, it was sevenfold what we estimated at some of the locations. We could have cut it off right at what we projected, but we didn't. And that's because, you know, these guys went to bat for the kids who are hungry in this community. So I want to thank you guys for that in particular because that's super important. We have one, well, that wasn't a presentation, that was a report. We do have a presentation from the Fire Department. It's a community member recognition. I think the community member is here. Yes, he is. Our Fire Commissioner, John Paul Shirley, the floor is yours.
Mayor, Council, members of the community, thank you. Good morning. I'd first like to apologize. I would have liked to have done this last month, but unfortunately, part of the presentation was custom, so it took a little bit longer than expected. But that being said, as you're all aware, October is Fire Prevention Month and to support that, we had an open house at the Fire Department, probably about this time last year. And it was a, an opportunity for members of the public to come meet the firefighters that serve them and come kind of check out the equipment that we use. A lot of people hear Fire Department, they just think fires and we do a lot more than put out fires. You know, basically, any type of rescue situation, medical emergencies, you know, we kind of handle it all. Earlier in the year, I'd had a conversation with this gentleman and I kind of explained what it is that we wanted to do. And the first words out of his mouth were, how can I help? And throughout the course of the year, every time I'd run into him, he'd, he'd always just say, when's that event happening? You know, I'm, I'm here to help. Let me know what it is that you need. As we got closer to the planning stages, you know, I reached out to him and I, you know, I asked him, I just said, hey, you know, can you do this, this, and this? And not only did he agree to that, he said, I'd also like to do more and he, he really stepped up. The open house was meant, again, just to, to come out and meet the firefighters and see what it is that we do, but it was also educational. You know, we had things there, you know, learn how to use fire extinguishers and, you know, sleeping with your bedroom door closed, how important that is. But I don't think the day would have been as fun as it was if it weren't for his contribution. He had the, the moon bounce there, the DJ, the face painters, the, the clowns, he, he just, he really made all of that happen.
Stilt walker.
What's that?
Stilt walker.
Yeah, even a stilt walker. Yes, I forgot about the, I don't know if I want to forget about that, that was a trap right on me, I'm kind of short. But he really made the day through his actions memorable and I, I could have been happier with, with the way that it, it turned out. So I'd like to recognize him and I'd like to thank him, not only personally, but from the Fire Department for, for making it a memorable day. And his name is Mr. Ed Nelson. If he could just come up to the front, please, and we have something for him.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
We ain't buying you no truck.
You don't get a fire truck, but this is a, a fire helmet and this was the custom piece. We got it in the, the orange and black, you know, for the city and it's just a, he's an advocate for the Chester Fire Department and like I said, the day wouldn't have been memorable without your contribution, so I truly appreciate everything that you've done. So, and this is for you. Now, I, I normally we make people, you know, express a couple of words, especially when we start our new police and firefighters, you know, I don't want to put them on the spot, so.
Put them on the spot. Put them on the spot.
If, if you'd like to say anything, you don't have to.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I'm not, I told you you didn't have to do this. I don't like to be noticed for things like that, but I want to thank my wife for not getting mad every time I spend money that's not in the budget. So, thank everybody and I really appreciate you.
And I thank you for your time, Mayor and Council and members of the community and especially Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I got a question before I say something to Nelson. You said we're supposed to sleep with our doors closed?
Yes. One of the most important things that you can do is sleep with your door closed. It's even more important than having a working smoke detector. Smoke is what kills people. And there, we had a picture and I'd, I'd be happy to share it on our social media. I believe we did show it, share on our social media. They did an experiment, actually, right up the road in Delaware County's Training Center. They made up a mock building, a mock home, and they left one door open and one door closed and they started a fire in the living room. The room with the door that was open was completely destroyed. The room with the door closed, you would have never knew that there was a fire in the building. Closing your door is the most important thing you can do. So I, I encourage everyone, please sleep with your doors closed. That will save your life. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
News to me, that's some good information.
So, but if, again,
I've been sleeping with my door open all my life.
Next year, the open house, we're going to make it bigger and better. We had a little bit of rain this year, but come out, that's just one piece of knowledge that you can gain from coming out and, and speaking with our firefighters, looking at the educational material that we provide. One of the comments, multiple comments that I did receive, we had a, a prop there that taught people the correct way to use a fire extinguisher and everyone thinks like, and I know she's laughing right there because she was one of the people, she, she's, Candace, she always said, she's like, I, I know how to use a fire extinguisher. You see them used in the movies all the time, how hard could it be? And she came up and actually learned the, the proper technique on how to use them. There, there is actually a technique to it. So, I mean, that's just one of the pieces of education that we provide to the community. And again, next year, we'd like to hope, you know, bigger and better. So please come out and join us, but nah, it was a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quickly, I just want to say congratulations to Nelson. Nelson is quite the superstar this week. This is his second recognition, so. That means you've done a lot of good work and you continue to do good work in the community and so keep it up. He's always just a phone call away and always willing to be a helping hand. And so I just want to congratulate you and say thank you for all the work that you do behind the scenes. Oftentimes, people don't want to be recognized, they just do the work because they really care about the community and they really care about our city. And Nelson is someone who really cares about this city and it shows day in and day out. And so, and he doesn't do it for recognition, he does it from his heart. And so I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you're doing and thank your wife for always standing beside you and. So congratulations, thank you.
I'd like to say too that I, I see your heart, Mr. Nelson, and thank you for your commitment to the city of Chester. And for all of you who may not know, he has the construction business and he does phenomenal work. And so if you're looking for someone to take care of your issues in your home, call that man first. I, I said, I had a, a issue and he said, here I come, and he was there within five minutes. He stopped what he was doing and he came and saw the issue and I thank you for being so prompt and, and it wasn't about a money thing, you know? So thank you for your commitment and congratulations on your new business.
Mr. Nelson, I just want to thank you. I met you years ago through the parent teacher organization. Our, my daughter is real good friends with your daughter and, and also your, is it Maya?
Yes.
Okay. They're all friends and I was so happy that Portia, little Portia, had such great friends. They're still friends today, but they just don't see each other that often. But I always admired how you parented your children. You were tough. You were tough, but you produced some wonderful, intelligent children and I just want to thank you for all of your contributions to the community as well. Thank you so much. Thank you for being a part of my daughter's village.
Yes, Mr. Nelson, again, I'm going to second what my colleague said. You have been like a second father to me since I've known you. A lot of people give me compliments, small thing on my varsity jacket from football from Chester High, but who do they know that you paid for all the seniors jackets that year just because you wanted to? You, you call me all the time, you stay on me, hey, Councilman, this is what we need to do for the community. Hey, Councilman, I noticed this problem on my street, what can we do about it? You and I have met with the Fire Department, the Fire Commissioners multiple times together face to face and, you know, that's something that's not advertised or spoken about, but Mr. Nelson, you do an amazing job to make sure that our community is, you know, protected and safe out of the kindness of your heart and you will do anything for anyone and I'm fine with speaking that vocally in front of our whole community right now. You are an amazing man, sir, and I'm just happy to see that you're getting the recognition that you deserve. Please continue to do an amazing job and I'm supporting you and I know the rest of the community, you know, will support my sentiments that we are supporting you as well. Thank you.
And I'll just say, I, I was present at that event and I saw Mr. and Mrs. Nelson and I was like, why are they here so long? I didn't know you guys had participated at that level until recently, so thank you very much. I really appreciate it. We have another presentation. This is presented by Ms. Lisa Dennis, our Chester Police Chaplain, or the head of the Chaplain Corps. And I know it involves a video, so she'll explain what, what we're here for, speaking to the mic.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chester residents. Mr. Nelson is my cousin. Chester has been honored with many special spiritual leaders who have helped to inspire, nurture, guide, and empower our community. Through the years, every year we want to celebrate and acknowledge our spiritual leaders who have been instrumental in bringing healing, peace, and reconciliation in our communities and throughout the world with a message of hope, love, and unity. In years past, we've acknowledged 20 Heritage Awards, plus three today, 16 Legacy Tributes, plus three today, a total of 42 Spiritual Leaders Awards over the last five years. And this year, we want to recognize and congratulate all of our recipients this year. I'm going to turn around this way. Because I want to speak to you.
You can take the mic off.
Take the mic off.
I can do that. So I want to make sure that this is a tribute, it's an acknowledgement. It is without selling ads or tickets, but it is to be able to bring to light what Chester makes and Chester has made some wonderful spiritual leaders. Please look at the presentation, which will keep the time down, and then we will call up our, our, our honorees.
Our recipients are Reverend Commodore Harris Pastor, Reverend Dr. William Rocky Brown III, Minister Keith Mohammed, Reverend Dr. E. Irving Millsell, Dr. Gerald Rutherford Pastor, Reverend Dr. Walter Paul Matthews Jr. Commodore S. Harris Jr. was born and raised in the city of Chester, which he loved so dearly. He was a member of Calvary Baptist Church as a child, where his journey to serve the Lord began. While a member of Calvary, he had the experience of meeting Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Sunday School. In 1962, he joined the United States Air Force until 1966. Immediately after, he began his career with the Chester Police Department. In his distinguished 30-year career with the department, he received numerous promotions, declarations, and accommodations, and he served the community with diligence, integrity, and honor. Commodore was the lead pastor at First Pave Baptist Church. He was a dedicated public servant with Chester Police Department. He volunteered in numerous ways to help his community. At the time of his retirement, he was recognized and proven to be the most decorated police officer in the history of the Chester Police Department. Reverend Dr. William Louis Rocky Brown III, a public servant, preacher, motivational counselor, author, and consultant, was born and raised in Chester, PA. A preacher by calling, yet a political activist by choice, Dr. Brown is an ordained Baptist minister of 46 years. In the 80s and 90s, he traveled around the country motivating youngsters to stay in school and say no to motivating youngsters to stay in school and say no to drugs and violence. His motivational assemblies consist of a unique technique of raps, chants, and audience participation. Thus, he was affectionately known as the Rapping Rev. Dr. Brown has been actively involved in numerous community and civic organizations. In addition to his many awards and citations, his accomplishments have been listed in a publication by Richard E. Harris entitled, "A History of Chester, Pennsylvania Negroes." Student Minister Keith Mohammed, a native of Philadelphia, joined the Nation of Islam under the leadership of the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan in 1990 while attending West Chester University. In 2004, equipped with experience, student Minister Keith was appointed to provide leadership as the coordinator of the Nation of Islam Chester Study Group. Under his leadership, the study group became an active part of the Chester community, participating in many efforts to make life for Chester residents better. His commitment and service are guided by Ecclesiastes 9 and 10. Whatever your hands find to do, do it with your might. For there is no word, or device, or knowledge, or wisdom in the grave where you are going. Reverend Dr. E. Irvin Millsap, devoted his life to ministry, education, and community service, answering the call to preach in 1969. Dr. Millsap served as pastor for two churches before being called in 1990 to shepherd Shiloh Baptist Church in Chester, PA. During his remarkable 23-year tenure as pastor of Shiloh Baptist Church, which concluded with his retirement in 2013, Dr. Millsap's visionary leadership guided the congregation to expand their impact through the founding of Shiloh Development Academy and the addition of a gymnasium, both designed to enrich the lives of the community. Through his decades of service as pastor, educator, and community leader, Dr. Millsap exemplified faith in action and inspired all those blessed to walk beside him. Dr. Weatherly was raised in Chester, Pennsylvania. He is the sixth of 11 children. While attending Range Temple College, Pastor Dr. Weatherly accepted Christ in 1959 at the age of 15. He graduated from Chester High School in 1963. In 1965, he was drafted into the U.S. Army. In 1973, he united with Rehoboth College and served faithfully. Dr. Weatherly stepped out on faith in 1975 and birthed the Grace College of Chester, PA, in his home. The Lord blessed the ministry and it quickly outgrew the house where they started. In 2006, the ministry purchased 2106 Edmont Avenue, Chester, PA. That was after the old edifice could no longer accommodate the standing room-only crowd. He performed many marriage ceremonies, baby dedications, and home-going celebrations during his years in ministry, even for those who weren't members of his church. Pastor Matthews was born in Philadelphia, PA in 1944. When his family went to Chester, PA, he soon professed Christ and was baptized and became an active member of the Bethany Baptist Church. In 1961, upon reaching his 17th birthday, Pastor Matthews dropped out of Chester High School and entered the United States Air Force. In 1976, Pastor Matthews acknowledged his call to ministry as a member of the Shiloh Baptist Church in Chester, Pennsylvania. Pastor Matthews has the philosophy that to whom much is given, much is required, and that those who have achieved should never forget the disenfranchised and those who are unable to speak out for themselves.
Can we give our honorees a round of applause? These men and women of God have paved the way to set the path for spiritual legacy and heritage in our community. And Chester, Pennsylvania is much better because they have sown seeds of righteousness, awarded righteous seeds sown while it was day so that God could get the glory from every spiritual investment. And as this time, I'm going to ask if my volunteers would be able to come forward.
And we want to recognize our heroes, our legacy, and our heritage awardees today. Thank you. If the family of Dr. Walter Paul Matthews Jr. is here.
If the family of Dr. Walter Paul Matthews Jr. is here. Can you please? We'll hold our applause because I think we're going to line up for a picture moment. Is that okay? To expedite the time. Our next recipient. If the family of Dr. Gerald Weatherly, pastor emeritus, is here. Family members, representative of Reverend Commodore Harris. We also would like Minister Keith Mohammed to come. Reverend Dr. William Rocky Brown. And if there's a representative for Dr. E. Irvin Millsap. On behalf of the Chester Local Branch, NAACP, City Council, and Mayor, and of the Police Department and the Chaplains and partnership, we would like to welcome and present our spiritual legacy inheritance awardees this year. Can you please give them a round of applause? Now, words from our mayor.
That's how they instruct me during the week, too. Hey, I want to thank the Chester Local Branch of the NAACP and the Chester Chaplains. So many of you up here I know so well, like the Harrises. They're my family. Butch Commodore was, is a big brother. And as a little guy, he represented what we want the city to represent in our police force as well. Like local people joining the force and just being out there representing us. I see Walter and Shannon Matthews just darling people. They just had a, their mother passed just recently and she was one of my dearest friends. Reverend Millsap, we just put the sign up at Shiloh just a few weeks ago, the honorary sign for him. Reverend Rocky Brown, just part of the family. I can't, I can't even say any more to that. And who else did we have down here? Gerald Weatherly is probably the only one I don't know personally. But this just demonstrates, oh, and Keith Mohammed, he's just solid. He's just that guy who represents the city in every way. True man of God and a true intellectual to boot. I just want to say that you couldn't have picked a finer group of individuals for this, for this award. When you first came to me, I was like, what is this all about? And it didn't take long for me to say, yes, let's do it right here in council chamber so all of the people in Chester can see. Not only those of us here present, but those who are viewing and those who will be viewing the recording for the rest of our lives. This is so important. We are a very spiritual city. Churches mean a lot to us, and particularly the black church, means so much to us as a people. So anytime that we can represent and recognize that body of clergy and what they represent to all of us as family, as business owners, and government, we're going to do it. So I just say thank you over and over again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as always, we'd love to hear. We'd love to hear from you. Let's start with my far right, Reverend Rocky Brown.
First giving honor to God, to the mayor and council, to the Chester Branch of the NAACP and the Chester Police Chaplain Corps. That's dear to me because I'm one of the co-founders of the Chester Chaplain Corps. And I was sitting here and I was reflecting. You know, when you get older in life, you start thinking back and you start realizing how God has brought you through. I'm happy to say, to a degree, I'm 70 years old now. And I started this journey back in my twenties when I was elected to city controller. I was the second African-American elected city controller back in the 80s. And some of the same people that came to council then come now, like you. And a couple of the same people who would harass us back then are here today. And so it just makes you think and reflect and realize how God has brought us through. Things have changed so much. When I was on council in the 90s, we didn't have none of these projectors. We were in the old building over there on 5th Street. I'll never forget, I bought, I bought a fax machine. And Mayor Leake called my office, laying me out, saying I wasted city money buying a fax machine. She didn't know really what it was. Two weeks later, she called me and said, can you mind if my office uses your fax machine? So things have really changed and I'm happy to see the city progress and move on. A lot of people have approached me and asked me, where have I been? I'm still involved. For the last 10 years, I've been teaching at the Chester Community Charter School. I'm at the charter school and the public school now. And we're teaching a curriculum that God blessed us create. It's called Harambe Maya Child, which means pull it together and manage your attitude, child. We teach positive attitude development, anger management techniques, and discipline. And one of the first lines in the pledge that they have to learn, and so many of you have come under me and know me as the Rapping Rev, the first line that says, I am somebody. And so I'm teaching that. I'm honored to be honored with Minister Keith. They have been an integral part of the work that I do. The development of my curriculum was done when I was working along with them back 10 years ago. And they were the ones who said, you need to put, the discipline part, you need to put drill. And that's what we have in there. We worked in the Million Man March. And I'll close by saying, within the nation, Chester-wise, I'm known as Baptist fruit.
I promise not to talk as long as the pastor did. My name is Walter Paul Matthews III. And thank you to the mayor and council and to Mr. Jones and our friend Lisa Lisa for acknowledging our father, Walter Paul Matthews Jr. He loved Chester. He left Chester, but Chester never left him. One of the threads throughout his life was his participation in the NAACP and his fight for social justice and for people who didn't have a voice. He was an agitator here in the city, running for council in the 70s when they wouldn't let people who looked like us on the council. When he left Chester, he joined the NAACP in Richmond when he was in grad school. He became the state conference director for the NAACP in Richmond. And he later left Richmond for Tampa because it's a lot warmer there than it is here and in Richmond. And he was the first vice president of the Tampa NAACP when he passed in '05. So this fight is something that he carried with him. He learned it here in Chester, started on the CPD. And all of his career was based in justice. He was a civil rights investigator for the city of Tampa when he passed. And thank you for honoring his legacy and memory today.
I'm Commodore Harris's wife. And I just want you all, if you don't know, he loved the city of Chester. He was looking forward to coming back and becoming involved. Unfortunately, because of COVID, he didn't manage. But I just want to share one thing with you and I'm going to let his first love. I mean, this girl loves him so much, I'm going to let her speak. But you know, one morning I woke up and Commodore said, I had a dream last night that I hit the lottery. He said, you know what I did? I gave a bunch of money to the Chester High School. He said, then I gave a bunch of money to the football team and the basketball team. And it was all about the city of Chester. And I says, well, wait a minute, what about me? You didn't give me nothing. He says, well, you're with me, so as long as we're together, you'll have it. But that's how much he loved the city of Chester. He never had a dream about doing big things for me. But he did have a dream of doing big things here with you because he loved the city of Chester. And I'm going to let his daughter, who is so crazy about her dad, speak.
Hello, everyone. First, I'm just going to say thank you, thank you, thank you. This means so much to all of us, his entire family, his brothers, his children. He got a great-grandbaby that he didn't get to meet, but she knows who he is. And she loves him so much. But what I will say is this, is the last conversation we had with my dad actually was on February 4th of 2021. He was in Crozier Hospital. And we were just talking to him. He, you know, he had fell ill, you know, and went in the hospital on February 2nd of 2021. And so we were just talking and I said, Cam, where you at? Just to see what he was, just to see what he was going to say. Because I knew that, you know, being sick, it had him, you know, a little bit, you know, off mentally with that COVID and everything like that. And he said, I'm at the police station with Gretzky. And I said, huh? He said, I'm at the police station with Gretzky. And that's what I said, I said, no, Cam. I said, you at Crozier Hospital? He said, oh, I am? I said, yeah, that's where you are. And that was the last conversation that we had with him. I will say that he loved Chester. He loved Chester. He loved his people. Even Nation of Islam, I remember as a kid and stuff like that, I remember you. I remember you. Met with you many times with my dad, I remember you. I remember a lot of people as well as with my godfather, Reverend Rocky Brown. But my dad loved Chester. So when it came time to lay my dad to rest, we knew that he was a minister at First Faith, but his heart was with Chester. So when my mom said, Tiffany, let's just do what you got to do, this planet. And the first thing I said was, he would, he would love, his wish would be to be laid to rest in his last police uniform in Chester. And that's what, that's what we did. And that's what we did. And I just want to say thank you, you know, thank you, thank you, everyone. what we did. And I just want to say thank you, you know, thank you, thank you, everyone. Let's keep all of these, let's keep, let's not let it fall on moments like this to keep these people's names alive. There are many opportunities. We can come together after this, you know, and keep things, keep these names alive. The community is needed, you know. We need, we all need to be embraced. We need this. Okay? So let's just, you know, we out here, there's different avenues, different wings of people fighting for our people in the community. I work out of Delaware County Prison. I'm a sergeant out there and I still in the midst of it all. They say, look, some of the people that know me, they say, look at Commodore, look at Commodore. Cause I'm just still making sure there that our people are treated right, but also we have to help our people. Okay? We have to help our people. They need it. They need it. All right. But thank you.
Minister, minister, before you speak, I just want to, for those of you who knew Commodore Harris, can you imagine what, what he would be like on Saturday at one o'clock? Up at the A field, will he be running up and down the field with the hat? Yes. Oh, we miss him dearly. Good to see you too.
First, I would like to give all praise and thanks to Almighty God alive. Thank the NAACP, City Council, the mayor, and all those involved. My sister, who affectionately calls me her twin, Chaplain, for your honor and recognition. I thank God for bringing me to the city of Chester. As those who are the believers, I thank them here in the city of Chester. Of course, my lovely wife, I wouldn't be and do anything without her, Sister Tracy Muhammad. Very quick, I tell it all the time to the believers and those who come to the mosque. Have you heard, as you heard, I was born and raised in Philadelphia, but Wyatt Westchester University, a brother from Chester, Larry Stevenson, who I played football with, we were riding on the bus to the football game. And he gave me a tape. He said, here, listen to this. So those who are old enough, I took my Walkman, put the cassette tape in there, and I heard the voice of the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan. So it was Chester that gave birth to my spiritual life. And in 2004, when Minister Rodney asked me to come to Chester, it was only, it resonated with me because I said, this is where it started for me. So I thank God for the citizens, the city of Chester, Pennsylvania. And as I always say, I wasn't born in Chester, but Chester has been born in me now. So I'm here to serve, and I'm honored to be with all those who have really served and laid the foundation for me to work. And we just take this award as motivation, because I'm not deserving of it. But I give my pledge that I will continue to work, that one day I'll be honored and worthy of it. So thank you all.
I am, please forgive me for a moment. My father passed away just two months ago. And he was very active, you know, in his church organization. I know some of you may not have known him politically. However, he was very active, again, in the Church of God in Christ, and pastoring in the city of Chester, a very hard worker. He retired from Scott Paper Company. So a lot of his time was committed to his work and to the ministry. And I am just honored that Chaplain Dennis, who was very active within the community, took the time to, you know, acknowledge my father in this way. And again, for all of those others who were honored on today, it's just a privilege and an honor to just be a part of this and the city, being here for the first time in a council meeting and to hear the different things that are going on in the community. And, you know, kind of put a fire, a little fire, a spark to see and hear a lot of what's going on and the things that they're pursuing to do, to just be somewhat of a part in some way. There's, you know, a lot that is going on within the community. And as far as faith, a faith base, it's important to have that. And for those of the leaders who are here that have been acknowledged and some who may not have yet, but yet to be encouraged to do our part as believers, to continue to pray for our city and to come together for our city. But I'm just thankful again for this opportunity to receive this in my father's honor. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Let's not forget Larry Stevenson. Thank you, Minister, for that. It's public comment time. Let's start with Nasir Jihad. You know the, you know the drill, three minutes. We prefer public comment, because that's what this period is called.
Jawala Scouts. Say, good morning, to council, Chester community, and the visitors. You know, I, I just think it was really meant for me to come out today. One thing I see first and foremost, I want to thank Brother Minister for the beautiful opening. And I thank all of y'all, Ms. Lisa, for having me. We all know, we've been working on it, we just keep working on it. We all here for the same thing, the benefit of the city of Chester. Really why I'm here today is, this might be on the website. I don't know, you know, you got things with this new technology. This is what I mess with the Jawala Scouts, them young youth, they might know. But I'm here for, we have Islamic Institute of Studies, the school up 1105 Concord Avenue. I'm here to see about the question, again, you might can direct me the right way, about, we want to get some schools own signs, maybe some bumps or something. We all know the area up there, they got that little corner where they just, they just recently put stop sign, and ain't nobody paying attention, because it's new. They still learning it. But if we could put maybe some signs up there, some speed bumps, or something up there being to acknowledge a school. So really, that's my request that I'm here for today. But one thing I want to add to it, since we doing a lot of recognition, I would like to thank y'all and recognize the city council who putting feet on the ground, who coming out in person and physically showing up, making the changes here in the city of Chester. Cause the community, we see it. The mic don't always acknowledge, but we see it. And may God continue to bless you to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Angie, Angie Johnson.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Angie Johnson. I'm Director of Prevention at the Boys and Girls Club of Chester. And I'm here to invite the whole community to our Resource Valley on Tuesday, November 18th at 11:00 AM. Our goal is to feed 400 families with 35 pounds of food, 35 pounds of personal hygiene. And we would like everybody to show up. And we have plenty and plenty of resources. And I want to say this, if you was there last year, you know, we started at 11:00, and we were done by 11:15, 11:20. So please come early. We have 400 boxes. Thank you.
Mr. Brown Williams.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
How y'all doing this day?
Good. How are you?
Well, I started to rise here today, a lot of places need to be blacktopped on Third Street. On Fourth Street, holes in the road, going to tell people automobile. As y'all got that on your mind. On Seventh Street, where them trees at, the curb coming up like that, somebody gonna get hurt on that. Different place, down there by Murphy Church. And then leave from there, you go over to those Potter Street. Road need to be fixed over there. Coming down through here, we need blacktop. You leave from there, I don't know how many trees y'all putting money in the Mariner Park, because they had tracking trailer loads. Why y'all don't build a gym or something for them children to have to go play? You got a big field at your own Potter Street? You got a big field down there on Eighth Street? You got a lot of empty field around here? Build something for the children to have somewhere to play. And that'll keep them out of a lot of trouble. But y'all ain't concerned about that, don't look like to me. I hear the fire chief get up there and pronounce what he doing. Now, I've been in this city for a long time. On Sunday at one o'clock, and used to be all fire chiefs come and put new fire extinguishers in people's houses. The last three or four years, I ain't seen no fire chief putting that mean. Every Sunday, they need us to go different areas, from the first ward to the 11th ward. But now I don't see them. There's a lot of things they can be doing here to make a big difference for the older people. Like a lot of cars parked with people care, everybody get around by their house. Need to be clear. Now, this is the main thing I come over here about. Last week, I called Delco, I called different people, I called you, but anybody never showed. Smoke was coming up at the van over. The sewer people did come down and look at it. I like to know what on that corner across the street from me, because them white folks are living in that house. They make a move out. They come around there sniffing and measuring. Three days later, they had to move out. Then another family had to move out. I like to know what in that over. I asked the inspector, I ain't expecting with the, he told me to go to hell, get out of this way. Cause I like to know what's going on. I lived there. And when the man pull up the thing, you couldn't, the man over there, you couldn't stand the sand. If something coming down through there, look like paint, it's gray. I don't know. You can come down and look at it. I don't know. There's a lot of things, little small things, Ron, you need to be done. And the trash, people dumping mattress.
15 seconds, Mr. Williams.
I ain't talking about no time, that dead folks down. A lot of things.
Well, let's shut his mic off then.
Shut it off.
Thank you.
And have a nice.
Mr. Saleem, Mr. Saleem, don't leave, come on up. Go ahead.
Hey, you've been coming here 60 years.
One second. Mr. Saleem, one second. Get into the mic then.
So, most of you know, I haven't been around for about a month. I'm thrilled to be back. And I just want to go on record, and I've been on record, and I want to say that the city of Chester is absolutely my most important client. And I am thrilled to be back to work. And I'm thrilled to be standing here. But I, I really want to say, what really touched me today was when I opened my packet today. And it was a little get well card that said, wishing you healing that touches both body and spirit, peace in those moments when you need it most. And it was absolutely signed by every member of my Chester family. So I just wanted to say, thank you for thinking of me, and I am thrilled to be back to work.
Mr. Saleem left, I think he went to the restroom. But Mr. Brown, just to your point, I just wanted to, to say this. And our chief of staff, Tom, can attest to this. Just last week, I marched into his office and said, Tom, I want to build a recreation center in the city of Chester. I grew up at my grandma's house on 11th and Upland, and I remember as a little boy going to the recreation center and doing my homework, doing arts and crafts. And after I got finished my homework, I was able to play pool, play Pac-Man and different things like that. Our children don't have that opportunity. And we went there for free. We didn't have to pay anything. And so I said to him, I said, we have to figure out a way how we can build a recreation center where children can come there for free and do their homework, learn and play. And so I don't know how we're going to do it or when we're going to do it, but that is on my list to build a recreation center in the city of Chester. So I feel with exactly what you're saying, and I'm working on it. Don't know how long it'll take, but I'm working on it, because that is something that our children need and deserve. Yes, sir.
And I also want to say that there is a gym being built right now on Seventh and Booth for the children at the access center. Yes. Yes.
I thought that would be housing back there.
It's going to be housing back there as well, but I just want you to know that there is a facility being built.
I've been there yesterday.
Okay.
And I'll just make our closing remarks. I, I just want to let you guys know that there are two events happening tomorrow. One of them, Chester is finally building some new, brand new homes. And there will be a groundbreaking tomorrow at 10:30 AM, and it's going to be at 2900 West Seventh Street. For those of you, that is the old Pulaski School. Where their school is, there will be 21 brand new townhomes being built. So if you're looking to buy a home next year soon, get your credit right, get your program right, first time home buyers program, CCIP, go through them. But that's happening tomorrow at 10:30 AM. And then at 3:15, Pastor Bayat Williams will be receiving a renaming, a street dedication ceremony will be tomorrow on Eighth Street. So if you get a chance, stop by those two events. Both of them are free and open to the public, and we would love to see the community out tomorrow. The street renaming will be at 3:15. And if you guys pick up a flyer, all of, both events is on this flyer.
Also, before we close, we all know that the government was in, or still in shutdown and it affected many of our residents. I want to applaud all of the efforts that our community has made in coming together, making sure no one went hungry. I've seen people from all walks, all faiths, be it Christian, be it Islamically, and all under one God. And I certainly appreciate all of you. And it just shows how, when we all come together, what can be accomplished. And I've seen people by the hundreds come hungry, but left full. So thank you for all of your efforts in our community.
Mr. Saleem. And I will say that to her point, he's running away. To that point, the, it looks like the federal budget, or the federal, the shutdown, thank you, is going to end soon, not without some controversy. And the state budget is being voted on today. So finally, we can get some money flowing again.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Council, all of you, and the good people in the city here. My name is Amin Abdu Saleem. I live 240 Patterson Street in Chester. I'd like to make brief comments with you. You know, it's good to hear all you see the people, you know, who made great contribution in the city. Certainly, and we have, we have a way of going. We need, we going to, Dr. Naima said, he said, we come from way back, going forward. So with that, I said that we have a long ways to go. We're not there yet. I kind of lost my thought a bit, but just to give recognition and not outstanding for anyone, but just simply to good people. Some of these are close to me. I do not, Keith, Brother Keith, he's, he's quite close to me, quite close. So I'd like to point, give him, as they say, a shout out. A shout out. There's quite a bit that I wrote, but I will not be able to say all this. But, you know, the one thing, it's, it's, Taheed, oneness of God. And I heard all the people, they made their contribution and they've been recognized, but they still have to come to this right here that I am speaking of. And I'm not speaking big headed stuff. This is what God has given to me, if you will. This is what God has given to me, if you will. Taheed, oneness of God, everyone, wherever you at, Christian, Muslim, Jew, or whatever, you gonna come here. So I don't need, they, they gave me a recognition once before, Mayor, Statist Kirkland, and Council, what Chester makes, makes Chester. So with that said, this is, there's quite a bit I wanna say to you, and there's quite a bit I've already said, if you can just tune in on, you're just Taheed, oneness of Allah, oneness of God, everyone. No one have not arrived yet, you gonna have to come to what I am putting before you, Inshallah. Abraham, if you will, he said he's the father of many nations, when he was called Abraham. But when he become father of many nations, as we are coming, he was called Abraham. He was called the friend of God. And the reason that he was called the friend of God, because he didn't just accept anything. They put many things to him. He said, "No, this is not my Lord." But, but when he came to his Lord, he said, "Now, this is my, my Lord." So this is where we coming to, where we coming. And we got a ways to go here, we got a ways to go here. Projection, they mentioned many projection, oh, 19 to 26, and all this, and 20 and 30, and so on. But we not gonna, man do not know what is be in front of him just the next minute, you know? But we going to follow the guidance, the clear guidance that our Lord has given to us, and we, we gonna know, we gonna follow God. There's quite a bit that I wanna say, but I pray that some, that, of what I said, it resonate, is good with you, and we will continue to follow the guidance of our Lord. Mashallah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem.
That concludes today's Chester City Council meeting. We covered a lot of ground today. I'm gonna give my council one more shot. Anything we forget? Anything you wanna share?
I, I just wanna say to Mr. Brown that I'm going to check with the Public Works Director and also others who are involved in our street program here in Chester. Every year, we have a certain number of streets that, if the money is there, we will try to blacktop, you know, fix some of our streets. So I'll get some information on that for you, and I'll give you a call, okay?
All right, I wanna encourage everybody, I think there's still some more on the table out here, the events that are coming up. Download the Chester City Connect app, which tells you everything that's going on all the time with push notifications. Don't forget, Chester High Football, 1:00 PM Saturday afternoon, up at the A Field. That's gonna be an exciting game. They'd love to have your support. Okay.
We are having an event on Monday for our community. Crystal, is Crystal still here? And, and we're still looking for donations, so if anyone would like to donate to the giveaway that's taking place on Monday, please see me before you leave, and I appreciate all your support.
Tell them what the giveaway is.
Oh, it's Thanksgiving. Thank you, Thanksgiving giveaway. It's on the back of the form, but it's gonna be a pretty big deal. The Philadelphia Eagles Kind Hearts Foundation will be here, along with other community partners, and somehow, I wound up being the one to make macaroni and cheese. So we are still in need of some items, and if you'd like to donate, please do so. Thank you all.
Okay, and it's budget season here in the city. Just wanna remind council, we're gonna meet over in that room to take our first glance at the budget. Budget hearing will be coming up. What week is the budget hearing? What?
December 8th.
12:08.
12:08, that's December 8th, that's right before council meeting.
Deliberate.
Oh, right before the deliberative, so that will be on a Monday, November 8th, at 1:30?
December 8th.
I'm sorry?
December 8th.
I said December 8th, it just didn't sound like that. All right, December 8th, Monday at 1:00 PM? 1:30?
1:00 PM.
1:00 PM. I say that because there is a group that's very interested in coming to the budget hearing, so I just wanna make sure they're aware that it is on Monday, December 8th, at 1:00 PM in this room.
I'd just like to congratulate all of the honorees. I, I didn't say anything, but all of you are more than worthy. And Minister Keith, you just always reminded me of Malcolm X, and I just love him, I just love him, you know? And when I first saw you, I said, "Oh, he reminds me of Malcolm X. He's a great leader," you know? And I just appreciate all of you, the families, for sharing, for sharing your family members with the city of Chester. Thank you for all of your hard work.
I was just given a message by Chaplain Lisa, and she wants me to announce that Chester Police Chaplain Corps is gonna have a meet and greet fundraiser at Chick-fil-A. Who don't like Chick-fil-A? I do. It's gonna be a Spirit Night, it's gonna be on Wednesday, oh, that's, that's the day, from 5:00 to 7:00. So if you guys are in the area of Chick-fil-A, go give them your support. It's called Spirit Night, and it's sponsored by the Chester Police Chaplain Corps. Yes, 4700 Edgemont Avenue, the one in Brookhaven.
So I think a percentage of whatever meal you pay for goes to the Chester Chaplains.
But I believe you have to let them know you're supporting Chester Chaplains.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seconded. Meeting adjourned. Got away from me.